I'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Minutes. Organizational meeting. Adoption of agenda. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Cutler? All in favor? Approved. Minutes. Organizational meeting. October 10th to 2023. Can I have a motion to adopt those minutes if there's no questions or concerns?
Sure.
Counselor Ross? All in favor? Regular meeting minutes of October 10th, 2023. Any questions, concerns?
I'll make that motion to accept them.
A move by Counselor Meister to accept the regular meeting minutes of October 10th, 2023 as presented.
All in favor? Two delegations. Abe?
Yeah, so first up, we have Alice Wickert and Sean Adams joining us from the Sustainable Housing Initiative, and they've been working on a project for the town for a few months now. It's called the Enabling Housing Choice Project, and this project is kind of picking up off of our, some of the housing strategies and assessments that we had done earlier this year. And so Alice and Sean have been engaging local landowners and developers, and also at one point, the Community Development Committee on Housing Obstacles. They've also conducted a, sorry, house development, housing development obstacles in town. And they also have performed a policy review of some of our development policies. So they have a presentation here, and I will turn it over to them to introduce themselves and do their presentation.
All right. Thank you, Abe. And good evening, everyone. So I'm Alice Wickert. I'm the project manager for the Enabling Housing Choice Project, which is part of the Rural Development Network's Sustainable Housing Initiative. With me today is Sean Adams. He's the planning specialist with the Enabling Housing Choice Project, and he and I are the team that have been working on this initiative. We'd like to thank Clare's Home Administration and Abe especially for inviting us here to speak with you about our project. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have following the presentation. Okay, so stay at this slide for a minute, please. I'll let you know when we're moving forward, okay? So the presentation today will give you a bit of context about who we are, what the project is, and what the goals of the EHC project are. So then we'll go over key findings, recommendations, and next steps. And then there's the report that you were given by Abe, that is, the Enabling Diverse Housing Development in Clare's Home. Next slide, please. So first, as RDN does with all of our presentations, we want to start out with a land acknowledgement. RDN's office is located in Edmonton, and the Enabling Housing Choice Project encompasses all of what we call Alberta, and what is also the traditional and ancestral territory of many peoples presently subject to Treaty 6, 7, and 8. We acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people who have lived on and cared for these lands for generations. Next slide, please. We also want to share a little bit about who we are at the Rural Development Network, which I'll be referring to as RDN throughout this presentation. At RDN, we support rural sustainability by listening to and understanding a community's needs, and then partnering with the community to fill gaps in services, identify social issues, and find effective solutions for its residents. Within RDN, the Sustainable Housing Initiative, or SHI, was created to help rural, remote, and Indigenous communities develop affordable and sustainable housing. The Enabling Housing Choice Project, which is where Clare's Home fits in, is a project under SHI that Sean will explain further. And so I'll turn it over to Sean now, and next slide, please.
Awesome. Thank you, Alice. So yes, what is the Enabling Housing Choice Project? Well, in short, it's a three-year research and policy project that's been funded by the Alberta Real Estate Foundation, and it really aims to examine and understand some of the barriers to rural housing development, but also suggest updates to policy and bylaws that can help enable and encourage housing choice and diversity in rural communities. Next slide, please. So our main goal, really, is to enable and provide housing choice and diversity across the housing continuum in Alberta. But how that looks, of course, it's a real complex process, because housing can be impacted by so many different factors. And with those often come a variety of challenges and barriers. So our project really aims to highlight some of these barriers and then the simple ways to overcome them, which brings us to our project today with Clare's Home, where we want to recommend these solutions for overcoming current barriers to diverse housing development in the community. Now, it's also important to note that the recommendations outlined in the report and presented here today are meant to encourage and facilitate continued discussion about housing diversity, housing policy, and housing needs in Clare's Home. It also needs to include all the players that are involved in this important issue, because this includes the town's residents and administration and town council, local business leaders, as well as those in the local housing industry. Next slide, please. And so our approach to developing this report was essentially to conduct research with community members and housing industry stakeholders, to first discuss and understand Clare's Home's current housing circumstances, issues, and needs, but to then identify any barriers that are impeding diverse housing development. Now, the end goal of our research was to not only identify the barriers and needs, but to also recommend the tools that the town can employ to address their housing needs, and also highlight what further areas of opportunity the town succeeds to enable diverse housing development. Next slide, please. Now, as I mentioned, our methodology for this report consisted of extensive research into best practices for enabling diverse housing development, and this started really when the EHC project began. But in order to get a localized understanding of Clare's Home's housing landscape, it was also crucial that we conducted interviews or focus groups with key actors that either worked for the town or operate within the local housing industries. This includes developers and home builders, landowners, and investors. And this was really important, because we wanted to understand housing development barriers, but also to understand Clare's Home's housing needs. And next slide, please. Thank you. So what are Clare's Home's housing needs? Well, I should note that the town recently conducted an updated housing needs and demand assessment, and this provides that statistical analysis of Clare's Home's overall housing needs. However, as a team, we felt it was important to also understand interview participants' perspective on what they believe are Clare's Home's key areas of housing need, and to see if these perspectives aligned with the needs assessment quantitative. And so through these interviews and focus groups, it was identified that there's three major areas of housing need, which are increased rental options and availability, housing options suitable for seniors and newcomers, as well as affordable housing. And these responses primarily aligned with the findings from the needs of them. But what's important to note is that we've also seen Clare's Home take action on some of these housing needs areas, and this includes the 26-unit Townhouse project that's currently under construction, which may eventually be providing rentals, or the rezoning application that will allow for three 50-unit apartment buildings on Westland Drive, as well as the 32-unit, both the 32 units that Perpignan has a lot of, because they need. And next slide, please. And while we wanted to understand Clare's Home's housing needs, as I mentioned earlier, we also asked participants to identify what they believe are key housing barriers in the community. And so I've included some of the primary barriers here on the slide, where interview and focus group participants mentioned that one barrier is the lack of local trades required for housing construction that's available in the community, as well as having shovel-ready properties in Clare's Home. Another one of the most commonly cited barriers were the upfront costs associated with housing development, because this can really put financial strain and increase risk for developers and builders. Furthermore, building and safety code regulations and parking requirements were another barrier that some developers and builders really felt impeded diverse housing development. And lastly, another barrier that some developers and landowners in Clare's Home mentioned was sometimes the lack of overall communication and the process between them and the town, where for them, understanding that development process is really crucial for them to move forward with their proposed housing development. Next slide, please. And so after identifying these primary barriers, our team assessed potential avenues for recommending development policy incentives in Clare's Home, and then asked interview participants if they felt more incentives needed to be introduced to encourage more housing development, and to also help reduce some of these upfront construction cost barriers. Now, I should note that we did gauge participants' perspectives on Clare's Home's relatively new residential tax refund bylaw, but it was found that the overall impact of this incentive is essentially yet to be determined, given how new it is. So therefore, our recommendations within the report were really to look at the town's overall housing needs and engagement feedback, and then recommend that the town explore options for developing a secondary suite incentive to help address those lower-end-of-market rental needs, but to also develop an affordable housing policy incentive that can help spur the creation of more affordable housing in the community. And lastly, we also provided additional incentives that other municipalities in Western Canada adopted in order to equip the town with a variety of incentives to explore. Now, I don't necessarily have the time to go over the exact details of all these incentives here, but you're more than welcome to ask us about them at the end of the presentation. Now, again, the purpose of these information and these incentive recommendations is really to facilitate discussion amongst council and administration, residents, and members of the local housing industry about how Clare's Home can attract more diverse housing development. And next slide, please. Thank you. And so while identifying policy incentive recommendations is just one approach to addressing the barrier of upfront cost for developers, our team also carefully examined Clare's Home's land use bylaw in order to promote a planning environment that can create more flexibility, but also help reduce development timelines for builders and developers. Additionally, we also explored what we call further areas of opportunity that the town can explore on an ongoing and future basis to help enable diverse housing development. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so after analyzing Clare's Home's land use bylaw, we did see significant potential for reducing the amount of residential districts in order to simplify zoning districts, because this in turn can reduce the length of development approval process for certain housing types, and also provide overall greater flexibility for developers. Some recent notable examples of Alberta municipalities that have reduced their overall zoning districts are the town of High River and the town of Oketooks. And so we encouraged the town to explore the work that these municipalities have done with their land use bylaw. Next slide, please. And moving along, if the town were to reduce the number of residential districts in the land use bylaw, we identified additional recommendations for increasing housing density and diversity in these proposed new districts. And so this generally consists of making certain housing types permitted uses in these new districts, and perhaps most especially, having secondary suites as a permitted use. And so understanding that, you know, one of Clare's Home's identified housing needs is that more affordable, lower-end-of-market rental option, secondary suites do provide that higher affordability, especially for people in the local workforce who are trying to maybe find a rental option in town, or even for seniors who might want to live with their family and be close to them, but kind of separated. Next slide, please. Now, lastly, regarding the land use bylaw, we also saw potential in expanding housing development opportunities in commercial and industrial districts in Clare's Home, with a particular emphasis on mixed-use residential development. So mixed use can provide flexibility for businesses to house new or existing workers, and can help increase density in the community, while also expanding the range of eligible commercial uses beyond just office spaces, that could accommodate a residential component. Next slide, please. Now, lastly, our report identifies those additional areas of opportunity for the town to explore to help overcome development barriers and also create a housing environment that fosters the development of more diverse and affordable housing. So some of the ongoing opportunities consist of facilitating continual community engagement on housing-related projects that garner support for diverse housing types in the town. Also, continuing to market and promote development incentives and opportunities to potential investors, developers, and builders, and this in turn can help create and support partnerships and relationships with local housing industry stakeholders. Some other future considerations that we mentioned to keep an eye on are vacant lots or buildings that have the potential to be repurposed for housing development. Now, this could even include buildings with historical or heritage values, older buildings that maybe they're vacant, and there's an opportunity for them to be revitalized and offer residential units. And then also to lobby the provincial government regarding provincial legislation that affects housing development. Now, this includes things like building and safety codes, or Alberta's new home warranty program. Next slide, please. And so in terms of next step, and what we feel needs to happen here, is that the conversation really needs to keep going amongst council and administration, local residents, home builders, and businesses, and anybody else who has a stake in providing or accessing housing in Clare's Home. Again, the purpose of these recommendations is for all the stakeholders to talk about them in a real, frank, and honest way. Now, they're not necessarily meant to be hard and fast rules to enact. They're meant to be a means to facilitate discussion with the goal of improving and enabling housing diversity and choices in Clare's Home. And this is not the last you'll hear from us. As one of the partner communities for the Enabling Housing Choice Project, we'll be monitoring Clare's Home's progress on moving forward with some of these recommendations, and we'll definitely be celebrating all your housing achievements along with you. And so as part of the monitoring process, we do want to know which recommendations worked for the town and which ones didn't, and what else the town did in terms of housing initiatives. And so questions we might ask, or, you know, did you amend or create new policy to attract development, and how did that work? Or did the land use bylaw updates help increase diversity and density, and did it help the people that it was meant to help? And so we'll have many questions as time goes on, and so we really just want to know what worked and what didn't. And finally, we'll be using the findings from Clare's Home and the five other communities that we've worked with that were part of the EHC project to help generate our guidebooks for the Enabling Housing Choice and Diversity. Now, this guidebook is scheduled to be released in spring of 2024, so you'll most likely see us at various municipal conferences to present our findings. Next slide, please. Thank you. And lastly, before we go, we just want to thank you all again for attending the presentation and having us here, and we'd really like to refer you to RDN's website, where you can find other resources and information that have been produced by the Sustainable Housing Initiative. And last slide, please. We're now happy to take any questions you may have, and if you have none at this time, we can, or we're more than happy to answer your questions through email, and you can reach out to Abe as well, who can send them our way. But thank you again.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Kettle?
Now, thank you for your presentation tonight. Just a couple of thoughts. You mentioned you did five, five communities. Does Clare's Home stand out in any, any respect, or do all five look very similar? Are there things from the Clare's Home recommendations or what you discovered in your research that stand out differently or than, than other communities?
No, that's, thank you for that question. Fantastic question. I would definitely say Clare's Home stands out in a very positive way in comparison to some of the other municipalities that we've worked with. As I was mentioning earlier in the presentation, based off some of the needs that were identified in the housing needs assessment, and through conversations with Abe, we've, you know, it's come to our attention that the town is already making significant strides to address some of those areas of housing need, so those townhouse and apartment units, as well as the seniors lodge units. So I think in terms of being proactive on this stance, our impression was that Clare's Home is on the ball, and the recommendations that we've provided in this report are to help keep that momentum going and to continue that discussion. And yeah, we, the five other municipalities that we've worked with, they all, of course, have their own unique challenges and barriers. Some are the same, some are a little bit different, and, but definitely I would say Clare's Home has stood out in a positive way.
Thank you.
If I can just add to that, too, a couple of things. First of all, the developers that we talked to seemed very, very on the ball. They were ready to move with new developments. They wanted to develop, they've got some pretty good ideas about how to address the housing needs. I think it would be really good to connect with them, with the, the housing committee especially, I think it would be good to connect with them. Or, you know, if you set up a community committee to talk about what the people want, what's going to work, what's not going to work, that kind of thing. The other comment I have is that we're finding some similarities among the five communities, and the one that probably jumps out the most is the need for more rental houses. That seems to be one of the themes that has come out in all five of the communities.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Thanks for having us. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Next delegation, Abe.
Yeah, the next delegation is, we've got one in person here, and I'll let them introduce themselves, one in person and one on Zoom, and they've been, sorry, I'm just switching screens here. They've been working with us on our broadband surveys as part of a grant, a provincial grant program, to assess development readiness of key areas in town, particularly in areas of broadband. The other portion of this grant is funding an area structure plan up in the northwest end of town, so. I'm just going to stop, try to stop sharing my screen here. Matt, can you just take over that, or? There we go.
Did that work for you?
Do you want me to kick it off, Matt?
Yeah, please proceed, Stephen.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you, thank you, counsel, and thank you, Abe, for, for your time and your attention to this matter, to this matter, and really appreciate the administration and what Abe's done in working with us to, you know, do this assessment and taking a look at the broadband infrastructure within Clare's Home, and seeing where we're taking the current state of how things are across the board, and also future moves, what we can and cannot do, or whatever challenges that we might run into. My name is Stephen Olmstead. My, my background is I've done over 10 years with Shaw Business as an account executive. I was responsible for multiple municipalities doing rural broadband builds specifically. I, my time with Shaw in the telecommunications space, I was responsible for over $10 million of capital investment of Shaw into areas such as Clare's Home, Medicine Hat, expansion of Shaw infrastructure, even including here in Clare's Home on Alberta Road. I was actually part of that entire conversation with your previous EDO, I believe it was Justin Sweeney. So we worked during that. So that was kind of my background, and then about a year ago, I decided to give my knowledge and my talents and work specifically for municipalities without, you know, directly helping the people, helping the towns seems a little more rewarding. So that's my background. I'll pass it over to, or, and as far as my role with, with Tango Networks, I'm their, their business strategy consultant, so I'm the one that takes a look at the overall picture, understanding the infrastructure, and can put, frame things in place, and see how we can move, move forward. And I'll pass it over to Matt, and he can introduce himself in Tango.
Yeah, and just a sound check. Everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Sorry about the creepy shadows, because it's close to Halloween, so I'm kind of stuck in a hotel, waiting for the highway to to feel a little bit better.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, thanks. It was good actually, Stephen Olmstead brought some very recent experience with Shaw, and some recent experience with rural Alberta. That's where we actually met, County Forty Mile, actually, was one of Shaw executives at that time, so it goes back about three or four years. We did, it was very important to actually do some of the first things we did with Shaw, which is to go on someone else's fiber infrastructure, which was the Forty Miles fiber infrastructure. So Tango Networks, of course, has been around for 14 years. We specialize in engineering and project management for, our niche is actually, well, Alberta, we're Alberta-focused, and we are, and our niche is, of course, in rural Alberta. So back to you, Stephen.
Yeah, and before we get deep into the survey, I assume you guys all have the document, the, the assessment document. Perfect. So the purpose of this survey really was, is to take a temperature of the market, get actual, real-time feedback from the business, the business sector in, in specific. And basically, it was in-world, it was in-person, real-world feedback. There are other ways, other municipalities that pursue doing surveys and trying to find, get a test of what was going on in the market as far as how people are feeling about where they are with broadband and where they can go with broadband. This, in our opinion, was a more effective way, because you're having in-person conversations with the business owners, and they're giving you real-world feedback instead of an online push button. There is an online component to capture data, like upload speeds and download speeds. And overall, like, it was, the purpose of the survey was to get the litmus test and also identify any challenges, you know, that exist right now or challenges for the future. A lot of times, people are concerned about how things are right now, but as the, the pace of the world and the technological world moves forward, you also have to make sure you're positioned to keep up. And so that's incredibly important, and we've, we've discovered some of that throughout the survey, which we'll highlight. And basically, this is just a, ensure, and actually, the residual effect or a side effect of this survey, working with economic development, is that the businesses were, were feeling that they were being heard. So we brought up economic development opportunities, whether they wanted to engage with economic development to talk about their business, and so that, that part was, they seemed to look very positively on that, that aspect of, of the survey as well. Is there anything else you want to add to the, the purpose of the survey there, Matt? Or has that covered it off?
That, that kind of gets to, once we get into the meat of it, I'm sure we'll have some, some more discussion there.
So I guess to start off, we'll go to importance of broadband, which is on that, on the sheet there. And you can see that the first quote in there, broadband is connectivity, and, and that whole phrasing, and actually, the entire importance of broadband template, that's the Understanding Community Broadband, the Alberta Broadband Toolkit, is actually a bunch of information that was collaboratively collected throughout multiple municipalities. So it wasn't just, you know, ISPs, it was actually multiple rural communities that were actually coming together and trying to figure out, how do we address these challenges? Because obviously, each municipality has its own challenges based on infrastructure that's existing, and geographical location, and distribution aspects. So I think the importance of broadband, as we cover off in that from page two on, is the, there's, there's a couple of main points that we need to really touch down on is, you know, broadband and economic development are tied. So the ability to scale your internet, the ability to have good internet, and economic development are 100% linked. You know, to be able to start your business, collect money, and to scale your business with cloud computing, it needs to be part of the conversation, is part of the conversation with majority of businesses, that where they pick and select to do business, and how far they can grow. Also, on that note, is the CRTC has now identified broadband as an essential service. So you got to keep that in mind, that, that internet now and internet capabilities is on, on par with power and water. So it's, it's important for organizations and municipalities to start taking a look at what broadband is in their community, almost like it is a flowing utility that actually brings life to the community. It needs to be addressed and prioritized in that way, in multiple people's opinions, including our own. And then even like real estate or the, like, CRTC demands, like, when I get into, I don't want to get into the technicalities of download and download and get into all the, that kind of range, but CRTC defines that 50 megabits, so 50 down is, and 10 up. So the amount of information, how quickly you can pull it into your house, 50 down, and how, and 10 up is the minimum standard for CRTC across Canada. So when we were doing this survey, we were also taking tests to see where the businesses were and what the infrastructure was, to what it was actually able to. to what it was actually able to, to provide on that. And, uh, yeah, go on.
And Stephen, just to add to that, just to add to that point too, because this goes back a bit of a segue into our surveys. Uh, so that was a, that was a requirement, 50 down, 10 up, set back in 2016. And that's actually when CRTC established it in their, in, in their, uh, in, in their bylaws as a having, uh, it as a basic service, which is, which it puts online with power and water. Uh, so of course with our surveys, people don't care about 50 down, 10 up. They care about good internet and can it support my business? So you will see, uh, some of the terminology is getting somewhat dated, but what businesses expect versus is that if they can actually do what they want to do and they don't expect to pay too much more.
Mm-hmm. And then I guess we'll, we'll move on to the survey observations. So page four. And it's kind of a high level. Yeah, just keep going there. Right there. So this is, like, the survey was done, um, the survey observations. Number one, there was 71 of the 136 businesses in the called quadrants that were surveyed, so 52%. Now, and we broke up those surveys into quadrants, so each section, and that included the, uh, the northwest industrial highway number two corridor, the corridor that runs through downtown, and then the industrial area in the southeast. Also in mind while we're doing those surveys, we were also had in mind because of Abe, uh, letting us know that there was annex land to the east that is positioned for development in the future. So we were ensuring during those surveys, we were trying to pinpoint geographical areas where the infrastructure might be good, might be bad and get the real-world feedback, but also ensuring that, uh, that we were positioning ourselves for, um, expansion to the east, because that will be top of mind for anyone that's going to develop in that area. What can they get and how can they get it and what does it look like? So basically, uh, one of the highlights of that is, so we've, we surveyed over half of it, but of, uh, what's interesting during the survey, there was a question asked of, of, uh, in the economic development portion of it, is they asked if, um, if they supported the towns or the economic developments, um, uh, if they supported the, the direction, like as far as the engagement to see where it was going, and that was 100% feedback. Every business owner we talked about or talked to supported the town looking into this and looking for ways to directly engage with ISPs to make things better, more organized effort into it, because they, they are seeing some challenges. Internet obviously was critical. That's almost a no-brainer when we're asking, as you can see, like, the importance to you. Well, it's important. Even the mid, no one said it wasn't important, but some people just have a basic business and they just need POS and they're good. Overall value to money, you can see there's a disparity there. A lot of people feel like they're overpaying or they're not getting what they're paying for, you know, but that also ranges based on, uh, experience and, and what they're involved in and also knowledge. Sometimes they, they aren't aware that there is more out there, so on and so forth. And I think the, uh, one of the interesting parts, and we'll touch on it a bit more, is, is the reliability. So the average reliability, so everyone was like, I, I believe my internet is average. And we're gonna touch on that a little bit deeper in our observations, because what Clare's Home business residents define as average is completely different from an urban business. Like what they're willing to deal with. You know what I mean? Like, oh, my internet is, is, is good. But if you can, it comparable to an urban center, is it? And then, uh, also we discovered that, which was kind of known to us, but also just to show you that the two major ISPs that are playing in the area are Telus and Shaw Rogers now. So there are, uh, Explorer Net, usually on the off links, and then there was, um, a Starlink customer as well. But your priority providers are Telus and Shaw, or Rogers, I should say. Is there anything else in the survey results that jumped out at you there, Matt?
We're going to get into the highlights, uh, a few things.
Sure. So now into the observations. Um, obviously we discovered, and now we have this broken out into highs to lows, so you can scan through it and, and see, uh, the prioritization based on what we, we witnessed. Um, obviously internet being critical, uh, it's, it's important to every business. And, uh, the interesting part about the broadband being, being, the two main ISPs being discovered is that you guys are actually like, even though that seems like it's limited, you guys aren't as limited as some other, other communities. Some other communities just have Telus or they just have, yeah, as you guys can tell, especially the more rural you get, you're, you're isolated. Interestingly enough, even the more rural you get, if you're dealing with certain satellite feeds or whether it's Explorer Net or anything like that, they are being, their main feeds do come from these two main ISPs. They do come and they do distribution off of that, right? So Clare's Home is interestingly positioned to have those two ISPs that are, that are running through the town and, and feeding the town, but it, it's, I think it's more about, are they doing enough and are they aware of, of how the residents feel about what their service is like in this town? Uh, like I, like I touched on before, the annex land to the east, um, in our opinion, is not positioned very well for capacity and capabilities of expanding broadband to them. There, uh, we foresee that there will be challenges regardless of ISP choice, uh, whether they go with a Rogers connection or a Shaw, or, uh, I'm sorry, Shaw Rogers connection or a Telus connection, there will be challenges in that, in that realm of expanding east. Basically at capacity for Clare's Home. And it, in our opinion, we, you know, we'd like it addressed with the ISPs. And then, uh, once again to the reliability. The reliability here, uh, compared to Calgary, like, like honestly, when they say an average reliability, when we're getting the feedback from the surveys, they would say like, my internet only goes down about once a month. Some were once a week. And they would consider that an average reliability. If internet goes down in urban Calgary areas or any of those major centers, if it goes down once, that's unacceptable to them. Where there are certain businesses that are dealing with literally weekly downtime or monthly downtime and they're like, that's okay, because they're just, they're used to it, right? But it needs to be addressed. And, uh, Matt, I'll hand it over to you. Any other observations you've, you want to touch on that?
Hope that, uh, that, no, that pretty much hits it. Uh, we do have a few, uh, very pertinent, uh, points from some of the community. Uh, we did get some more feedback after the fax and email follow-ups. It kind of gives you a flavor of what we were seeing out there too. I'll pull up, uh, Middle Creek. So if you want to get, talk a little bit through it, so you can kind of see, this kind of just reinforces what we were talking about. It's kind of the, I guess what we're starting to see is what people call okay or good even by like, by rural standards, uh, it, it's not good, especially if you start having folks coming from the cities looking to relocate elsewhere and, and maybe move into the roles. Of course, their expectations come with that. Uh, so here's a business, Middle Creek, uh, Chantel Roberts gave us this note. And this is kind of not, I wouldn't say it was, uh, was isolated, definitely wasn't. Uh, so there's, of course, she has some issues getting the, uh, good quality internet today and of course issues in, she's, and she's worried about the future, about not getting issues in the future. And she knows, you can see here, sure enough, she reached out to both the incumbents, Shaw and Telus. She got a price tag, uh, and now she's a little bit worried about how to get her, her, her digital food safety management system onto a, on a cloud-based platform. Of course, of course, those kind of platforms save her money. They serve, save for an IT department and they save for servers and they save for a place to securely store that information.
Hey, Matt, Matt, the email's not coming up on the screen, sir.
Oh.
Oh, you guys got it. Oh, no, they all got it though. That's fine. Yeah. So you guys have the email and you see Chantel. Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, and I didn't want to interrupt you, Matt, because I did, Chantel actually called me last week. It was out of the blue just before this and she asked if there was anything that we could do for, like, as far as Tango. But Tango, we're just here to observe and to advise. Um, and yes, like, as you can see in there, like, it's a perfect example of, of an organization that's going to scale. And unfortunately, they, they're in a situation. So how do we address that situation? Go on, Matt.
And, yeah, to poke at that, like, how do we address the situation? Like, that's, that's, I guess, what we're calling for in the RFD is, uh, and it's, it's already part of the grant that we have, but we just want to reinforce why we're doing this with council. Is just really to get buy-in that, uh, council too feels that broadband is important, that, uh, they, they've seen this in their community, that they, uh, look at the data that, that came in here. We can, and it's at the back of the presentation. I know we don't have the time to go through it here, but, uh, you know, is this something that's important? And if that's the case, uh, so we've worked with many different municipalities and no matter what happens, what, what's needed to get done is, is to put a policy in place. And, and that really establishes, uh, if anyone comes and asks council what we're doing, they can say, hey, we know it's important and we want to make sure when we approach it though, we don't get ourselves into a bit of a pickle about funding something that we don't want to or doing something that we, we haven't agreed on, that doesn't make sense for us. So a policy kind of protects council from, from that. And so we do have some good examples that have been working very well and, and places very similar to Clare's Home. And when you get a policy in place and then a bit of a strategy behind it, uh, ideally we'd like the ISPs to do it all and to pay for everything. But when they can't, of course, we'd like to rely on grant funds. And in some unique cases, when you're looking at a tax rate base impact, you even look at some funding and even some, uh, funding from the community, which, which I've recently been, uh, probably a part of. So that's, that's kind of the intent of this, is to show, you know, kind of reinforce the, the opinion, like it's, that, that broadband is important, is viewed as important by the community. And then of course, uh, the two, the two next steps with the, uh, the RFD.
Yeah, and just, just to the policy importance, it also helps for advocacy, just because of my background within ISPs and how they function, is that they are, they are a reactive organization, as you can probably tell. They, they, once it breaks, they'll come in and fix it. If, if we're, if, if we were dealing with an organization, and I'm talking as if I was back at Shaw because I dealt with municipal clients, is that if they had policy direction, our G and R team would be involved, which is our government and regulatory, regulatory part of our business, and then they would get more attention, just simply because it didn't matter on size, it was based on policy, direction, and it's more concerted effort, so then that way, we as, at that time Shaw, would see it as an organized communication other than a, a broken communication. It's just more, more holistic and easier to have accountability on both sides. Like what the expectations are, where, where our roles are and it's a concerted effort. And, uh, we found that policy helped out.
And nothing more, nothing scares an ISP more than a potential loss of market share. And I don't know how Clare's Home found itself in the situation, but they actually have half the city covered by, by Telus and then they have kind of covered by, by, uh, by Shaw. And it looks like Shaw is the one who is, kind of has more, more investment today. But that does open the, uh, the prospect of, of having the ISPs contemplate a potential loss of market share if we start to, to have those discussions, discussion with each party. And, and we know how to do it.
Yeah, and it's, and you gotta think, based on the survey results, like, looking at the split of ISP, each of them have about half the market share. So one of them steps up in a big way. They have half a market share to take. So we can leverage that. And that's where our role comes in, is just to strategize on that aspect. Once we're there and council is comfortable with the direction and the policy. But as far as, what I will add before I turn it over to questions, is that based on your geographical location, Clare's Home is in a very interesting look, like, very, very unique situation, because you have the highway corridor and basically all made, main transport fiber as far as capacity, travels up from Left Bridge, like, basically comes to Medicine Hat and then splits, redundant link down south, highway three, number two back up to Calgary, the main hub. The main transport fiber comes through here. So the capacity issues at some point are going to have to be addressed and Clare's Home might actually be a benefit to driving that conversation, because it needs to happen. Including the conversations with Rogers reaching out about small cell technology and deployment within Clare's Home. No matter what, they're gonna run into the same problem, capacity. The challenge is, is that without that concerted effort, and this is what I'm thinking of about tactically, is that wireline in, in, in telecommunications companies, wireless and wireline, as far as land-based, they don't communicate. They have their own budgets, their own directives and KPIs, and they do. But because they're pursuing Abe right now on the wireless side for small cell, they're gonna run into a wireline capacity issue and this is a chance for an investment within the corridor that could directly benefit the, this is just my mind at a high level. So. I, I apologize, yeah.
Exactly what I was gonna say when you said it away, Ben, we have, that's the thing. We need somebody who's got the idea of what we're talking about, didn't you, right?
Yeah, and I don't want, I don't want to, we don't want to come off as overwhelming. Like I said, it is, like, when you live it and breathe it for so long, it comes, like, we talk a second language. It, it's like, but I think where, where I'm very passionate, Matt's very passionate, is that we want to help and you're in, we want to advise, like, we want to have those, we understand them and we can communicate that.
Well, I just like the idea too, where you're talking about that ability to be on that main corridor. We're in a situation where, you know, it's gotta come through us to get anywhere around us, so it's.
You guys are on the highway.
Right.
And so, but, and sometimes they don't even think about that. And it's not ignorance. Like I said, I'm babbling on and like, you know, it's going on, but they might not even be considering what that represents. So you get that, you get that organized conservative advocacy piece put in place and you, you come at them in a, in a, you speak their language for a bit and then they, you know, light bulbs start going off, ding, ding, ding. And then ultimately what we want is the benefit to the business community and the residents of, of Clare's Home. That's our mission, but we have to, you know, have this garble stuff, for lack of a better word.
In, with, with my current business, um, we, we just had, uh, discussions with Shaw. We're kind of on an island, uh, right on highway three that didn't have service to either. We were running off of a 1988 Telus phone line.
Eighty years old, yeah.
Yeah, um, and there were challenges. Shaw is doing an, uh, active pursuit on business to gain that. Did a cost benefit, uh, on it and brought cable up into that corridor to service that. There seemed like they're actively working on that. Uh, in discussion with some of the gentlemen that were doing the installs and we started talking about, um, some of the, uh, work orders that are coming down on, on them as far as upgrading on hubs and so on and so forth. And the talk, um, with the sales team when they were dealing with our business. Um, the, the fiber network, uh, that ends at High River and I can't remember the millions of dollars they were talking about to do this, this twin. The indication I've got from, from the gentlemen that are doing the work on the grounds is that they are, they are making investments into the hubs to scale up for those types of items. Including when we were talking about the, the east, uh, industrial land. They were working on a, on a napkin sketch as to how they could get Shaw to the east side of the community. Whether that happens is interesting, but, um, they do see, or seem to, seem to be talking about investment as, as key to this area right now. I don't know if you've experienced any of that chatter or not?
Yes, I, I've, I've been away from Shaw for almost a year now since January and during the highway three corridor expansion, because I did builds in High River, Oketoks, we've been talking about capacity upgrades between, uh, basically, well, pretty much Left Bridge right up to High River for a long time. And with the Rogers acquisition, everything kind, kind of pumped the brakes for a bit, but I know that it is part, especially if they're talking about small cell technology, there's, there is something that has to be done. And, um, so if you're hearing that from the street, like, on, on, on the ground and they're actually looking at, at that aspect, I would believe that's coming down the pipe, but now it's like, we're believing. So why can't we get, like, let's get a, it, you know what I'm saying? Like, let's get a, a formal from them and we can get that, so.
And the way to approach it, like, already with, uh, the MD, we, we did a, we did a strategy with them. And they, of course, want, uh, their, their offices out there, they have the Porcupine Hills areas, they have other, other needs. They need to fill for broadband, their pressing needs and potentials, they qualify for grant funding. And they have to get that big pipe built from Shaw, from somewhere. Right now I sit in about 20 kilometers north of Clare's Home at a place called Parkland. And we pushed as far as it could to Shaw. They were super receptive. They brought their network design team, they brought a, a few sales executives. And the next step is to kind of push that conversation the next step further and say, well, along that route is Clare's Home. And you've already probably talked to your, your tool techs and there's this industrial park on the east. There's half the town that's potential revenue and we want to know what you can do. And with, with, uh, small cells, can you tell us, Rogers, what benefit that is to Clare's Home? What can that mean for businesses and residential? And then can we do more? So if you're gonna put, put small cells in and they need a better fiber connection, then what does that mean for trying fiber direct lines for the businesses?
Counselor Cales?
A few questions. Uh, by small cell, are you talking 5G? Is that analogous?
It kind of is.
Okay, anyway, uh, one of my, one of my main questions was around, uh, I mean, we have an extensive, uh, well, currently now Bell-owned supernet infrastructure and lots of fiber there. Does that lay into any of these conversations?
It's, uh, Matt, do you want? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll maybe I'll poke at that one first, Stephen. That's, that's, that's a tough one. So I'm talking with, uh, people in charge of the taxpayers first, so I don't want to say that $400 million, maybe. so I don't want to say that $400 million, maybe it didn't get you as much as you thought. But, okay, so AXIA, of course, who operate, maintain a lot of that infrastructure, used to. Now it's a subsidiary of Bell that does a lot of it as well. Basically, for an ISP, internet service provider, you can apply for access to that. But they won't do much more with it. We do use AXIA for, like, we just recently used them in a county, about 200 kilometers east of you. And we use them, we put fiber right to their location, they have a little handful in front of their shelter. And the ISP said, good, because I'm going to get a big fat pipe from AXIA, and then I'm going to get your county provided fiber, and I'm going to connect two businesses down the highway. And that's how they like to use it. But for them actually doing something from a business perspective, I don't know if that opportunity exists very much in Clarisome.
Well, I'm more speaking of the ability to handle that backhaul piece, right? I mean, if you're talking, trying to tie in all the 5G initiatives or one, you got your last mile issues, but you also got your backend, where you have to provide enough capacity. I mean, there's, you know, their fiber's just as good as anybody else's fiber, and they're willing to, you know, I'm sure for a price, don't get me wrong, you know, they're willing to co-locate some stuff. And I mean, you know, they're willing to do some business, I mean.
Yeah, and that's exactly what they do. The telcos are doing the backend, and they do it with each other on the distribution side. It's the side that aren't the internet providers necessarily, but more the folks who own the high-speed pipes. They'll negotiate access to each other's fibers, they do it all the time. So when you get your Telus connection, it might be coming partway over a Shaw distribution fiber, in the same way they could use that AXIA fiber. But it would have to come back to that ISP's willingness, or the big guy's willingness, Rogers or Telus, to use AXIA.
Okay, fair enough. Now, my other point was, more practically, from our board point of view, what does a policy look like that's going to help enable this, right? I mean, you know, back in the day, AXIA was going around, and we were on the list at some point to put in last mile fiber into every location. When that got, well, bought by Telus, or bought by Bell and eventually rolled over to Telus, as far as I understand, all those installations have pretty much ground to a halt. So we're talking last mile stuff, which right now, to me, seems like 5G being the most obvious unless you happen to have a cable wire somewhere close. So what does a policy from the town of Clarisome enable to do that? I mean, we're likely, okay, so if we opened up a trench from between, you know, the Papa on the east side up to the north, we might be able to lay down some dark fiber. But to what end? What's it connecting to, right? So I'm just looking for practically, what does the policy in, from town of Clarisome drive?
Yeah, that's, this is why I actually took some of the center point of view a few years back when I was a subconsultant to Clearwater. And I was amazed at the policy and the strategy they put together. And right or wrong, I, you know, opinions on both sides of the cap there, and they did a very large fiber network and last mile, you know, fiber type builds and wireless builds. And they own all the infrastructure. And that policy was essential to actually get grant funding and to drive and galvanize ISPs to know how serious Clearwater was taking broadband in their community. And that's really, so speaking selfishly, that's the vehicle I use a policy for. One, it kind of gets people a little bit off of, lets the councils explain to people, you know, what are you doing on broadband? They say, well, we have a policy. And in the policy, it says broadband is important. It says it's important for these reasons, and it's important to these people. And we also, though, in the policy, say what we don't want to do. And that's very important for the ISPs. So in Clearwater, they said, yeah, we want to provide services. But in maybe Clarisome policy, we'd say, no, no, we don't want to provide any internet. We're willing to invest in initiatives that make sense to us at our discretion. And we feel it's this important, but so it tells us kind of where we want to play. Like, we're maybe a willing partner, but not necessarily someone who would actually take that 24/7 call to provide internet to people.
Did that make sense to you?
Yes.
I agree with it, but it doesn't make sense.
Because I'm like...
He's the only one who knows what you're talking about.
Yeah, well, the policy is the foundation for the direction of the community. So based on an assessment of taking a lipnis test of what you have available as far as the infrastructure and the ISPs available, what the policy does is it gives you the foundation to make decisions and to drive in one direction instead of no direction. So it's not regardless, it's a moot point whether you want to be an ISP and lay dark fiber and be an enabler, or you want to be an ISP, or do you want to just make sure you have advocacy and a voice at the table? So the policy is just the foundation of the verbalization of where we go. And I think that's what we're doing in stages, is that what we're doing is we're doing a test, like, as far as Tango, representing and working for you, is we're getting an idea of what the landscape looks like geographically, what infrastructure is there, and addressing some of those concerns that you have. And then what we want to do is sit back and then get that policy direction, that foundation. So now we're making a concerted effort, because the one thing it boils down to is, is broadband important to you, important to this town? Not just what it is right now, but where we're going. And I think that's what the policy does, is that foundation for direction. And then it allows us to make concerted advocacy efforts outwards to the ISPs. Or if we need to fill a gap, or the town sees that they want to step in, well, then at least you have that foundation in place to go down that direction. I think Clarisome personally, my opinion, is that you have two ISPs that are here. I think what we try to do is find a way to bring the attention to the challenges of Clarisome, and then basically steer it in a direction where they compete to invest money in your town to achieve their goals. So I'm not saying playing chess with them, but at the same time, sir, they each have half a market share to lose. So who wants to step up? And then if you guys have a policy for what that represents and what that looks like, it's not that you're advocating for one side, you're advocating for Clarisome. Who wants to invest in us? And what we can do is show them the business case, because they know, but they don't know.
Do that again.
What's that?
They know, but they don't know.
They know, but they don't know. Well, they know, they always know there's more to grow, but they don't know.
They don't know where it's at, yeah. Yeah, no, I hear you.
Yeah. So sorry, like, so I hope that kind of addresses the policy, sorry, sir.
Well, and I guess I was looking for something fairly practical. Yes, we could put out a policy, say broadband's important. I mean, that's apple pie. Of course, it's important. But maybe the fact that we create the policy that states that is just the first step. And then, you know, we get a little media challenge, we do a little splash, we do something, we grab somebody's attention. I mean, we could look at what meat and potatoes in the policy needs to look like. Like, maybe a new development has to have a broadband strategy as to how, what's going to go on, right? So I was just looking for what some of the meat and potatoes would look like in that policy.
I do have a sample one I can share. It's the one that, it kind of suits the community, if that helps. Or we can just share it after the fact. I don't know if it went to the council's, Abe.
No, it didn't.
What's that, Matt?
I did just a skeleton policy. I could just put that on the screen and kind of show you some of the main elements to a typical one for a community like Clarisome.
Well, I think what we can do after this is share the draft with council for a conversation at a later time. So they didn't get the example policy?
Is it on the...
Oh, so sorry, we were speaking to a sample policy. Matt, I believe, sorry, I know you guys have time, or we have time, but there is, yeah. We'll take care of it later.
It's very straightforward, and it really just gets, let's, I'm going to do is take it into the ISPs. And then that lets them push it up deeper into the organization. It's a nice document that shows the ISP, that the community has considered broadband. And at a council level, which resonates in ISP, they have decided it's important, which to them means a few different things.
Any other questions, comments? I think we're good. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time, all of you.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Stephen, thanks.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. Like I said, sometimes there's a lot of garble snare coming over, right?
Rod understood everything.
Yeah, just strategically, like Clarisome's in it, you have the portal, you have the 2 fees. You have the market advantage of one of the ISPs. I think there is a chance or an opportunity for getting them to fight over who's making the investment. I honestly do. Like, in conceptual, of course, practice is an entirely different thing, but there is, there's something there.
Dark fiber driving down this corridor, and it's just a matter of getting players to agree to work with each other to deal with it.
To light it up, and that's the question to AXIA. Am I allowed to speak? I don't want to interrupt anything here, so I got to get, I know we got to get going. But the AXIA thing is like, it's access, and usually they need to rely on one of the ISPs to pump light down, right? So it's like, the fiber's good, but you still leave the bandwidth behind it. They've got to tap into one of those big things.
Yeah, but the ISP doesn't have to live in Clarisome, they can live anywhere.
Absolutely, it can live anywhere, yes. As long as they have the DWM fiber in the area, 100% they can tap. But AXIA usually accesses the dark, it's access, and that's why they pay access to put the light down.
Yeah, so just before you take off, Stephen, there is a motion recommended for council in this, along with this delegation.
Who would like to make that motion?
I'd be happy to.
Counselor Kettles. Question?
Move by Counselor Kettles to accept the broadband survey results and to direct administration to continue working with Tango Networks to develop a broadband policy for the town of Clarisome and to work with ISPs to improve broadband service for Clarisome.
All in favor? Approved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting one. And sir, feel free to reach out to Matt, myself, anytime if you want to just chat.
Sure.
Take care, Abe.
See you, thanks, Stephen.
We can nerd out.
Ready, Abe?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, action items. Bylaw 1764, solid waste management bylaw. Abe?
So this bylaw is on the agenda tonight for second and third readings. As we discussed at last council meeting, we are in the process of implementing a new garbage solid waste service in town, and which includes automated pickup as opposed to the old hand bombing to make that overall service. I guess we had to amend our bylaws to reflect the new delivery of service. We discussed some minor increases to the service. $1, $1 a month per residential and some some increases to the commercial bin rentals and some decreases to the, sorry, decrease to the bin rentals and increases to the bin service. So those changes are highlighted in the bylaw, and it is there for second and third reading.
Questions, concerns?
In for Patty, in for Tom.
Motion for a second reading? Counselor Carlson. Question?
Move by Counselor Carlson to give bylaw 1764, solid waste management bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Could I get a motion for a third reading? Counselor Meister?
Move by Counselor Meister to give bylaw 1764, the solid waste management bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Kettles?
I just wonder if there would be an opportunity from the town to do, marketing's not the term I want, but just something going, you know, help your neighbor. You know, if they're having trouble with their, with a bin or moving around or something. Just some sort of verbiage to kind of kick off this, or make it exciting, or make it a positive, or... Because I think it's a great day for Clarisome. I think we're doing a lot of good things there, and I'd like to get a nice positive spin on this.
Yeah, we can incorporate that message. We have some messaging going out in the paper, in the town news this week. We are going to have some Facebook posts, and there should be some messaging in the paper outside of the town news this week as well. So we are actively sharing information, and we can definitely incorporate something like that into a Facebook post or town news or something.
Okay. Bylaw 1767, land use bylaw amendment. Abe?
So on the agenda tonight for first reading is bylaw 1767, land use bylaw amendment. And this is for an application for rezoning at land located at 51 and 23 Fifth Street East from retail commercial to R4 multiple residential. The purpose of the application is to allow for the property to be used for multiple residential development. Our development officer has been in conversation with this business owner, landowner. And there have been some vacancies in that property, commercial vacancies in that property over the last few years. It's been hard to keep it at capacity. And recognizing the need for rental properties in the community, the property owners thought that they'd be interested in developing a five to six apartment complex to fill some of that need and get better occupancy in the building. So as discussed tonight, rental, increased rental housing is in need for Clarisome, and we've previously seen that in our affordable housing strategy and our housing needs assessment. Furthermore, the proposed rezoning does fit with neighboring areas. It's in a residential area, so. Questions on...
Questions, concerns? Counselor Cutler.
Am I allowed to ask for clarity of this building? This is the Journeys building, right? Do they not already have suites in there, in the basements? Like, aren't they already half-residential?
Caretaker suite.
Oh, caretaker suite, oh. So it's just kind of, oh, okay. But it's already, okay, but I just wanted to make sure, because I drove by to look and I couldn't find the number, and it was getting dark. But this is the Journeys building, looking, okay, okay.
Yep.
I like it.
Any other, Counselor Kettles?
It's just so unclear, the understanding, does there still be some commercial there? So this would be a mixed use?
No. They're getting rid of all the commercial.
He wants to convert it completely all the way.
To a five box, like a five condo.
Can't think it.
Any other questions, concerns? This is just a land use change, right?
Yep.
Whatever's going to happen still has to come back.
Yeah, they're just asking to put apartments in there, we're just rezoning it.
And then all the other plans go through MPC for approval and...
Yep.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion? Counselor Ross? Abe?
Move by Counselor Ross to give bylaw 1767, a bylaw to amend, the land use bylaw number 1525, first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, bylaw 1768, dog bylaw, all readings. Abe?
Yeah, so recently, we received a request from Cares to change the impound fees for cats and dogs from $20 a day to $30 a day. And this is to account for rising operational costs. And so we have to amend the bylaw. We do have all three readings on here for you, council, which requires an additional motion to approve third reading, or to consider third reading, and then to have third reading. So four motions total to amend the dog bylaw and the rates specifically as well. So, uh, four motions total, um, to amend the dog bylaw and, uh, the rates specifically, as well as the cat bylaw. It's not something that's absolutely necessary. Um, however, uh, if council's okay with that, we can, um, pass all those readings. As I say, not necessary to get all readings, uh, in one night. It's potential, it's optional to do two readings or one reading and then, uh, circulate and then have them back for, for another night. So it's, uh, I'll let Candid, Counselor Meister, uh, perhaps, uh, speak to that maybe.
Well, not only is there more animals that are being, I wanna say collected, being impounded and surrendered at CARES, it's, it's a huge issue, and spaying and neutering of animals is also contributing to this factor. But comparable rates are around $50 in a lot of other municipalities, and this is just a small addition to what we're already collecting. But vet bills are humongous every single month, and there's no sign of them going down.
I have a question. I'm wondering if there is a seniors rate, if possible. There could be a seniors rate for, uh, dogs. I mean, lots of seniors in the town that have dogs, and they're on a fixed budget. And increasing the rate, uh, for registering them, uh, I think it was 40, $40 before? And now it's 70 or?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering if there could be a seniors rate? Also, in some areas, they do, um, service animals, like guide dogs, they don't charge a fee for? If people have them, if they're registered and they have paperwork for them? It's just thoughts that I'm throwing out, you know, to...
I'm pretty sure already we don't have a fee for service dogs. I might be wrong on that one, but the seniors rate, I think it's fair to have the same rate across the board for everybody. You can't make exceptions to the rules. It's one and, one and done, kind of.
I just wanted, just for clarity, this is, this is for impound?
This is for impound.
So this is, this is, this is not for anything else? This is a dog that's been turned over?
Oh, I thought it was the registration of dogs.
Yeah, no, this is not registration. It's just a dog that's been turned over or found on the street or whatever.
Oh, okay.
Am I clear on that? Am I good, right on that? Yeah.
Okay, that's different.
That's for clarity, cause I was, I thought we were just voting on $20 to $30.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
Yes.
No increase to registration or...
No, we did that a couple months ago. No, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Meister, for clarification. Are we doing all of the cat bylaw at the same time?
Yeah, so that's, uh, potentially eight motions we're gonna be running through here.
Okay. First reading, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Meister?
Move by Counselor Meister, that bylaw number 1768, uh, dog bylaw be given first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Kettles, motion on reading two? Abe?
Move by Counselor Kettles, that bylaw 1768, the dog bylaw be given second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to allow third and final reading of bylaw 1768. Counselor Carlson? Question?
Move by Counselor Car, Carlson to allow for third and final reading of bylaw number 1768.
All in favor? Approved. Motion for third and final reading of bylaw 1768, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Ross? Question?
I got lost after three, didn't I? Uh, move by Counselor Ross, uh, bylaw number 1768, the dog, dog bylaw be given third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Same thing with the cat bylaw. First reading, please, motion? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Move by Counselor Carlson, that bylaw number 1769, cat bylaw be given first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Kettles, second reading?
Move by Counselor Kettles, that bylaw 1769, cat bylaw be given second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to allow for third and final reading of bylaw 1769. Counselor Ross?
Move by Counselor Ross to allow for third and final reading of bylaw number 1769.
All in favor? Motion for third and final reading? Counselor Meister? Question?
Move by Counselor Meister, that bylaw 1769, cat bylaw be given third and final reading.
All? All in favor? Approved. Okay. Bylaw 1770. Abe?
There we are. Okay, so this is our water and sewer utility bylaw. Uh, if council recalls, uh, we did not have any increases in those rates for 2023 as per council's direction. Um, what we normally try to do, or have proposed to do, is to have, um, inflationary increases 2% to 3%. Um, and following, uh, uh, 2022's rates, uh, council requested that the rates be frozen for 2023. So we're kind of at the time of year where, uh, we ask you to consider the rates right around now, uh, now November-ish. Consider the rates in the bylaw, uh, yeah, for future years. Um, just a little bit of discussion on increasing operating costs, as, as council knows, it's more expensive to, um, to run the service. Um, and so, uh, from labor, from equipment, from, um, all sorts of chemical treatment costs are, are up significantly. And so we're recommending, uh, 3% annual increase, inflationary increase, uh, to the water and sewer utility bylaw um, over the next, uh, into 2026. Yes.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Kettles?
So, so just for clarity, when this bylaw was initially created, there was no, uh, automatic increase built into the bylaw for a year after year? There was? And, and so what was that rate?
Two and a half.
Two and a half? And that hasn't been able to hold things?
Counselor Kettles?
So we, it was two and a...
It was two and a half percent yearly, and then we were using a lot more water. We had a lot more income coming from the water, so we just didn't have the increase in 2023. We, as a council, voted against the increase in 2023 to hold it at whatever rate it was at 2022. With the intent to look at it again now, that increase of cost and, uh, wages increase and those types of things, we can implement another four-year, three-year increase with the option to hold it again if we're making too much money off it.
Right, that's essentially what happened. Was even at that two and a half percent, because of the volume of water, we ended up being a bit of a surplus situation. So we were comfortable?
Right.
Just suspending it for last year.
Right.
And so we would have those same options later on from this one, is that correct?
Yeah, that was one of the big things, was we can do it for three years, but we always have that option if we find that... Cause we're not here to make money, we're here to put money away for their services. So we do have that option. If we feel that it's an opportunity to hold it in 2025, we can do that.
And that way, it also creates a, a budgetary explanation to the rate user as well. And again, yeah, we ended up with a little bit of a surplus and went, if we can save the town people money, please do. I'll move first reading if nobody else.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson? Question?
Move by Counselor, Counselor Carlson to give bylaw 17, oh, sorry. Hold on, bylaw 1770, 1770, the water and sewer utility amendment bylaw, first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, correspondence? Abe?
Yeah, the Ag Services Board, uh, in the MD is hosting their yearly Legacy of the Land banquet. Uh, that takes place November 3rd, uh, at the Fort McLeod Community Center from, uh, 5:30 onwards. Uh, they have extended, uh, two tickets, uh, to each council in the MD and are looking for some attendees from, uh, the Town Clarus Home Council.
Anyone like to attend? Counselor Cutler?
I will. If nobody else wants to. It's a good night. I, I think it's a great way to collaborate and, and look at agriculture, as they are a vital part of how we connect with the MD and stuff. So I think we should have a representative and...
I will also attend. Correspondence, Rowan House Society. Abe?
So, uh, some information from Rowan House, November is Family Violence Prevention Month. And so, uh, their, uh, Rowan House is, uh, looking to draw attention to, uh, to this time. Um, and they, there's a little bit of information on their, um, core programs, um, and how they are, uh, 24-hour support line, emergency shelter program, children's program, outreach program, preventive education program, and, uh, court support program is their envelope of, uh, core programs uh, that they seek to, um, uh, improve, uh, domestic abuse and family violence awareness and prevention. And so they are additionally asking for, uh, a proclamation from the town. They've, uh, provided a, uh, formal proclamation in here and looking for council's, uh, endorsement of that. Generally, council's, uh, policy, uh, to not endorse or proclaim any given, uh, cause, uh, just to remain neutral.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, correspondence? Chinook Sexual Assault Center. Abe?
Yeah, invitation to, uh, council or perhaps the mayor to attend the grand opening of the Chinook Child and, Chinook Child and Advocacy Center. Uh, November 17th at 10 a.m., they are opening up a, uh, a sexual assault center, uh, in Lethbridge.
Anyone interested?
No, I think it's, it's a great opportunity if anybody can make it up there, but I can't commit to that at this time.
I will attend. Okay. Correspondence? Inclusion Foothills. Abe?
Uh, Inclusion Foothills is inviting, um, town council, members of town council to an evening of networking. And it is for, uh, Foothills Association Celebrates Inclusive Businesses. That is October 25th, it's in a couple of days here, um, in High River. So, October 25th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., if, uh, you're interested in going. Anybody?
Anybody interested?
No.
Okay. Correspondence, Willow Creek Immigration Services. Abe?
So, uh, Willow Creek Immigration Services, uh, are looking for a, uh, letter of support. Their parent organization, which is the Calgary Catholic?
Immigration Services.
Immigration Services, um, is the one that actually seeks funding for them. Willow Creek is in town here, has a, uh, a remote, uh, office that supplies immigrant services to the town. They've been, uh, very active in the community, um, and very helpful with, uh, welcoming and inclusive, uh, services for immigrants uh, since we've been running the immigration program. And they're looking for, uh, again, a letter of support, uh, for additional funding to maintain the, uh, office and service delivery, um, here in town for, I, I don't know, for the foreseeable future. I don't know how long, uh, they're looking for, but... So if council's in favor, we just, uh, get a motion directing administration to, uh, uh, provide that letter of support.
Questions, concerns?
No concerns, I'll make a motion to write a letter of support. Please and thank you.
Abe?
Uh, move by Counselor Carlson to write a letter of support for the Willow Creek Immigration Services, uh, funding opportunity.
All in favor? Approved. Request for a decision. Art Society Letter of Support, Community Foundation, Community Priorities Grant. Abe?
So, uh, we, uh, we missed the, uh, deadline. Uh, it's come and gone, we did apply. Um, administration went ahead and provided a letter of support. We're just looking for, uh, council's approval to, uh...
For forgiveness.
Well played, sir.
Everyone's, everyone's raising a motion to take that back. Sometimes, sometimes you have to grab the woof-woof horn, right? Every once in a while, we, we get the requests, and we don't have the time to get it to the agenda. Um, uh, and so just would like a formal motion in the books. Uh, I guess, uh, Art Society has provided, or, sorry, has applied to the Community Foundation for, uh, for equipment to help with their quilt show. It's some piping and some stands, uh, uh, I guess the cost, the cost is around $9,300. And so they've, uh, uh, sent that application in.
Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Ross? Question?
Move by Counselor Ross to write a letter of support towards the Clarus Home Art Society, uh, for the Community Foundation, Community Priorities Grant.
All in favor? Approved.
Not once, but twice.
Okay, request for a decision, letter of support, Clarus Home Fire Department. Abe?
So, pretty much everything I just said.
I love the letter, though.
Yeah, the, the, uh... So the fire department is, uh, applied to the same, uh, funding source, which has closed, um, for, to assist with their extrication tools, uh, Jaws of Life. Uh, they have been saving money for a few years, uh, for that. And, uh, yeah, looking for a letter of support for that.
Motion, please? Counselor Ross?
Move by...
Question?
Move by Counselor Ross to write a letter of support towards the Clarus Home Fire Department for the Community Priorities Grant.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Old Man Watershed Council Pollinator Gardens. Abe?
So, the Old Man Watershed Council reached out to us last week. Uh, they are interested in applying for a five-year grant, um, which is aimed at restoring habitat for native bees, uh, which is the kakoo bumblebee. It was recognized as a species at risk, uh, in the town. You may recall, we had some information about this last year, uh, on our agenda, actually. Um, and so, uh, they're looking to, we don't know how many, uh, pollinator gardens they would be looking to put in the community. But there'd be several. They've asked us if, uh, if we, if the town, if they could provide a letter of support. Uh, if, if successful, they would install several, uh, several plant, planters, uh, pollinator gardens throughout the community. Um, the town could, uh, definitely assist and manage, uh, one or two. And they've asked that we reach out to local institutions and perhaps businesses as well, partner with them. Uh, the idea there is all the maintenance is done by volunteers. We'd be recruiting volunteers. Um, and, but all costs would be borne, uh, or, uh, accounted for through the, through the grant. We did have some concerns about increasing our watering requirements, because we are in watering restrictions. Uh, the plant species are native to the area, and so we explained what our water restrictions were. Uh, and they said it shouldn't be a problem, they're drought-resistant, uh, plants. And they said it shouldn't be a problem, they're drought-resistant plants. So, we don't have any concerns with that. There's also a possibility of, they said they might be able to provide water barrels or water bags at the sites as well, so.
Questions, concerns?
Let's save the bees.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Please add that they can do it in my yard if they'd like, to the motion.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to write a letter of support for the Old Man Watershed Council's Restoring Grasslands and Empowering Communities Project.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision. Library Board Appointment. Abe?
So, there's a member of the Clare's Home Library Board whose term is expiring or has expired. It is a member from, one of the two members from the M.D. of Willow Creek. This is the member-at-large from the M.D. of Willow Creek. We have some highlighted information here that's pertinent to the appointment being three years. That's running up, are expiring. And board members are eligible to be reappointed for two additional consecutive terms of office. So, the member whose term has expired is Ashley Tibbet. And so, if council's in favor, just looking for a motion to reappoint Ashley to the library board.
Ashley's a great attendance. She's on the finance committee, so I highly recommend her.
I'll make the motion to reappoint her.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to reappoint Ashley Tibbet to the Clare's Home Library Board as the member-at-large for the M.D. of Willow Creek.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision. Aluminum Rink Divider. Abe?
So, back in twenty-eighteen, Hockey Canada made some adjustments to their policies that all under nine and under seven minor hockey teams would play on a modified ice surface. So, shortening, shortening of their rink. At the time, the town was, the town or minor hockey were successful in getting some funds for some foam rink dividers. However, there, I guess there's a concern that they are only sixteen inches tall, and so, it's probably a lot of pucks get by, I would imagine. And so, the town has been talking with minor hockey about purchasing some temporary boards that would be more effective at separating the ice surface, two ice surfaces. So, we do have a cost for that project here, which is eighty-two hundred dollars plus thirteen in shipping. Minor hockey has agreed to contribute twenty-five percent of the total cost for the new system. If council's in favor, we would recommend taking the money out of the arena reserves and the arena capital reserves and replenish that reserve with increased advertising that we'd be able to have from the increased board service. Advertising service.
No.
Any questions?
Counsel Kettle?
I think adding these would probably enable them to better pursue some out-of-town tournaments as well that are more focused on, you know, the U-nines and the U-sevens. So, I think it has some benefits over and beyond our immediate minor hockey needs, too.
Counselor Cutler?
Yeah, so, these are minor hockey rules, right? These, this was changed by Hockey Alberta. I can see the need for having a better process of stopping the puck. If you've ever been down there on a Saturday, Sunday morning, it's quite the fiasco with the little eight, sixteen-inch funnel pieces. But it is, it is a minor hockey problem. And I know minor hockey has a bank account and some funds within their, within their needs to meet what they require to function as a minor hockey association. As a town to support the purchase of something to run a community event, it's not benefiting the rink, it's benefiting the minor hockey association. And I'm sorry if I made a comment earlier, but there won't be any advertising going on these boards because they're only out for an hour during the one game of the seven-year-olds and the nine-year-olds. And you're not going to be able to get advertising on these kind of boards as, as you would with the regular boards, I feel. I do struggle with doing seventy-five percent of funding a project that is for an organization that has income that comes into it, that isn't providing for more than, it's not functioning the arena better, it's functioning minor hockey. So, I, I think the onus lies on minor hockey for this one myself.
Any other questions, concerns?
No, I'm conflicted.
Could I have a motion? Oh, Counsel Kettles?
I'm happy to make the motion to support as, as recommended, the expenditure and take the seventy-five from the arena capital reserve.
Counselor Cutler?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, to that?
For clarity, we don't have seventy-five hundred dollars in the reserve, do we? It'll be replenished and filled up as we go along.
No, we do, we do.
There is seventy-five, okay, I read that wrong then, so.
So, there is a motion on the floor. Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to approve the out-of-budget expenditure of the aluminum rink dividers, funded seventy-five percent from the arena capital reserve to a maximum of seventy-two hundred, with twenty-five percent funded by Clare's Home Minor Hockey.
All in favor? Question?
Could I, could I just amend that motion, that motion so that it's with the remainder funded by, you know, in case it goes over that price, with the remainder focused by minor hockey?
So, there's a motion to amend?
Amend? Motion?
So...
Do we have?
It's a, it's a friendly amendment.
Yeah, yeah. So, it would just be, technically, it's a motion to amend the motion, so we need to have a move by Counselor Kettles to amend the motion.
Amend the motion.
Could I amend that motion a little bit?
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to amend the, the motion. Just need some wording help here, Counselor Kettles.
To fund seventy-five percent from reserve to a maximum of seventy-two hundred with the remainder of the expense being funded by Clare's Home Minor Hockey.
Okay. All in favor?
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment.
Okay, so that passed. So, the motion now reads, moved by Counselor Kettles to approve the out-of-budget expenditure of the aluminum rink dividers, funded seventy-five percent from the arena capital reserves to a maximum of seventy-two hundred, with the remainder of the expense to be funded by Clare's Home Minor Hockey.
That's good, Counselor Kettles?
That's fine for me.
Could I have that motion?
That was one.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed?
Defeated.
Defeated. Okay. Request for decision, Tamrac Subdivision Engineering. Abe?
So, we have been working on getting some, we've had a couple, sorry, let me back it up. We have had a couple requests about putting services in at Pine Place, which not a lot of people are aware of in town. But Pine Place is directly east of the Tamrac subdivision, where we are currently having some development. And so, there have been requests from a couple of different groups into the properties. There are services adjacent, but to bring services all the way up to the cul-de-sac that is Pine Place, we are interested in finding out what those costs were, what the town's responsibilities are in terms of funding those costs and what the developers' costs would be. And so, we're looking for an expenditure of forty-nine hundred dollars. We've received a quote from Associated Engineering to provide, to provide probable costs and on the servicing of Pine Place. Once we have that, we'll be able to advise our interested groups on what kind of costs they might be looking into to develop those lots. And we do have money in our land reserves, and we are suggesting that the money for that service come out of the land reserve.
Questions, concerns? Could I have a motion? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to approve the out-of-budget expenditure in the amount of forty-nine hundred dollars to be funded from the town's land reserves account.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, organizational restructuring. Abe?
So, we do have a change to the organizational structure that we'd like to present to council here today. Restructuring, proposed restructuring exists in the Community Development Department. And previously, there was Development Services Manager and an Economic Development Officer, who were kind of co-managers in that department. That restructuring happened back in November, when council, in light of their, their economic priorities and their interests in spurring development, created the Community Development Department. And with the purpose of having economic development and development in the same department, speaking, communicating more on development processes, development matters, and speeding up and facilitating development. And just acknowledging the similar work that both, both economic development and traditional development perform for the town. Attending meetings, for example, similar meetings, and, and just improving communication on development processes. So, now, we're suggesting that the Development Services Manager can oversee the Economic Development Officer. And again, just to further recognize the interrelatedness and efficiencies and greater progress can be found when the two are working together to accomplish goals and complete tasks and projects. And the new, in this new suggested structure or proposed structure, the town streamlines the department by having just one manager overseeing both development and economic development, and can delegate tasks and projects to the appropriate personnel and committees. So, for example, MPC Economic Development and the Community Development Committee. Furthermore, the restructuring maximizes the potential of the Development Services Manager and giving the C.A.O. one less direct report. So, ultimately giving more capacity to the C.A.O.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Kettles?
I like the reorganization, and I think it'll provide some clarity as you, as the town looks to recruit some folks in, in this, this line. So, it'd be, I think it'll provide a lot of clarity during the interview process or candidate search.
Motion? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to approve the organizational structure as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, request for direction, Community Center Assessment. Abe?
So, several months ago, the Community Hall Board asked council to consider having, commissioning an assessment on the community center. It is a very large aging facility that is both expensive to operate and maintain. And the Community Hall Board definitely works hard to do that. However, managing that facility with volunteers, not understanding or knowledgeable about what, perhaps, what condition the building is in and what might need to be replaced, makes it difficult when you're applying for grant funds, which they do a lot of that. And so, they were looking for a better overall picture of maintenance requirements and, and costs as well. For the, and so, council agreed to have that assessment done. Assessment's back. There's a ten-year maintenance window on there. I guess, some positives about that report are that all of the recommended changes or maintenance, maintenance requirements are kind of end-of-life, normal and life-cycle renewal recommendations. The report or the assessment does provide five different classifications, from number one being life safety or urgent, number three, which is what all these recommendations in the report are, normal and life-cycle renewal, and number five, classification as upgrade or discretionary timing. So, there is around eight-hundred thousand, when adjusted for inflation, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of upgrades, maintenance issues over the next ten years, nine to ten years, ranging from refurbished metal cladding to replacing the roof, some HVAC items, furnace replacement, makeup air units, condensing units, and some electrical upgrades as well. So, I have received an invitation from the Hall Board to discuss this report with them. I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow. Wanted to know if council had any specific direction on, on what you'd like me to say in regards to the report.
Comments? Counselor Kettles?
One of the initial drivers of, of this report was, was a meeting we had with, with members and with the M.D., who, I think we all wanted some clarity as to what next steps might be around the capital requirements for this facility. So, I appreciate administration going out and giving us some clarity around this. I think it, I think it's a good report. I think, I think it's a favorable report. And so, I think the, the challenge will be around how we accommodate budget-wise and through our partners, meeting some of these expectations. And maybe they're a little, little different than, than what the, the last request was with the board. So, I, you know, I'd be interested, I guess, in their feedback, but also, I will, you know, defer to your conversations with, with that board, who are a lot more intimate with the requirements of that facility, so. But anyway, my, my point is, thank you for, for doing this. I think it'll be, it'll help us move forward.
Okay?
My thoughts, council, is that we need to talk about not just this building, but a lot of other buildings that we have that require maintenance and that our planning season for those capital budgets is, is right now. We're about to start those meetings. And I think what I'll report to the board is that, obviously, the town appreciates all that they do to maintain and operate the building, and that council will have conversations about this and prioritizing about this and other buildings. And we'll just have to get some information as we get direction and council makes- we get direction and council makes decisions on capital projects.
Thank you, Abe. Request for direction. Aggressive deer.
They really are, though.
Abe?
Yeah, so, uh, we, uh, we actually got, uh, a call at the town office last week about aggressive deer, and I believe Counsel Carlson was visited by the same, uh, concerned resident, and so, he, he requested that we have some conversation about, uh, the concern.
Absolutely. So, uh, citizen came forward, uh, apparently, their, uh, neighbor had put their dog out on the leash in the backyard. Um, it's a corridor where the deer tend to come through. Um, my understanding is that that dog on the leash was trampled by the deer, uh, and is now deceased. Um, so, in conversations with that and conversations with the town and then being, uh, directed to fish and wildlife out in Pincher, um, up to the point where, uh, their feelings were that, um, the, there should be, uh, some form of involvement with fish and wildlife if you've got a animal contained within your yard, um, was on a leash, all of these items, and a, and a deer ends up coming through your property, uh, and does damage that fish and wildlife, should be able to follow up in some way, shape, or form, uh, with no, uh, proof of aggression towards humans, uh, fish and wildlife, just thank them for their time. Um, and it sounded as though there were no further actions required. Um, the, the citizen wasn't happy with that, uh, level of involvement, asked the town if we could do a follow-up with fish and wildlife and explain those concerns. Uh, my understanding is we're going to be going into the rut as well here, PDQ, if it hasn't already started, so, uh, we've got enough little, little Bambi's wandering around and some issues that, that do come up, so, uh, good time to both post the information that we've got here for, uh, dealing with deer in the season, um, and then hopefully some conversation with fish and wildlife as well.
Do you need a motion for us to contact fish and wildlife?
Yeah, we, we would, uh, take a motion for that.
Counselor Carl's? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to direct administration to, uh, contact fish and wildlife regard, regarding the resident concern over aggressive deer.
All in favor? Approved.
Just a question? Just a question. Where do these deer tips come from?
I, I, not sure.
Like, we didn't write them, so are they from fish and wildlife? Like, this is their suggestion to call nine-one-one for an aggressive deer?
Yeah, they've, they've been collected, it was on a file, uh, that we have, that we've shared information, uh, don't know where it came from, but-
Not sure nine-one-one would be-
Right, I don't think so either.
I saw Lefbridge did.
Yeah?
I, I saw Tabor had an ostrich open, nine-one-one was there for that.
The ostrich audio, we saw that.
That's right, you call it you can.
Okay, information brief, CA report. Questions, concerns? Everybody read through it?
Yep.
Yeah. Looks good, thanks for the information.
Information brief. Counselor Committee reports. Thank you to Counsel Meister and Counsel Kettles.
Thank you, thank you very much, Counsel Kettles.
Yes, I did, didn't want you to, uh, be the lone shining star.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody have anything to add or comments? Counselor Cutler?
Clar's Home Transportation Society will be having a fifty-fifty coming up soon. That'll go along with a Karen's fifty-fifty that is going on right now, along with some other minor hockey fifty-fifties that are going on right now, so if you're out there watching and you want to support, go to alphabox.ca and type in Clar's Home, it'll show you all the local Clar's Home fifty-fifties.
Thank you, Counselor Cutler. Uh, council resolution status. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none? Could I have a motion to adopt the information items as presented? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn. Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to adjourn at eight-fifty-six PM.
All in favor? Approved.